Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting of October 7th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah, as well as Shrewsbury Public Schools IT Director Brian LaRue, who assists us with our meetings each week. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to speak with us, please email us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us, and we'd be happy to have you join us by telephone due to the current COVID restrictions. Next is Chairperson and members' report. Anything this evening? Nothing? Thank you. Next is Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I am proud to report, I was notified today that both of our middle schools, Sherwood Middle School and Oak Middle School, are being recognized by the Special Olympics as Unified Champion Schools. You may recall that last year, Shrewsbury High School received that designation. This has to do not only with the addition of some unified athletic programs, in this case basketball. We had a middle school unified basketball team that was for both campuses combined. Unfortunately, their season was truncated by the school shutdown in March, but they had gotten that off the ground. But in addition to that, there's a host of criteria that the Special Olympics uses to determine whether the school is building inclusive programming and an inclusive culture and climate for all students. And we're very proud now that both of our middle schools, as well as our high school, have been designated as Unified Champion School. And we'll provide some more specifics to that in an upcoming district communication, but that was really, obviously, very pleased to get that news today. And I want to congratulate and thank all of the middle school staff who got that going, the students who participated, and of course, our families for supporting it as well. So congratulations to all involved. And that is Superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. Our first timed scheduled appointment this evening will be an update on the opening of school. And again, Dr. Sawyer and district administrators will provide the new information.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'll begin, you know, first off with the three key messages, adapted a little bit because now we're certainly underway for our school year. We're in our fourth week of class. The health and well-being of our students and families and our staff is our first priority. Our focus for this school year is we're working hard to develop both a safe school environment for our students and staff that prioritizes everyone's well-being and also enables high levels of learning for all. And we are operating based on guidance from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, of course, public health authorities, as we closely monitor the latest information from medical experts and evolving data regarding the pandemic across the state and here locally in Shrewsbury and central Massachusetts. As I mentioned last week, I want to reiterate that we have much to be proud of. There is an enormous amount of work that's gone into this reopening. It's been pleasing to hear a lot of anecdotal commentary as I'm around town in communicating with different folks and families about students feeling good about the program and what they're able to do, whether that's your in-school. Many people are very grateful for the ability for students to be in school for part of the week. And then others are feeling good about the connections and what's happening with the remote program as well. Obviously, we're continuing to work on that, and we'll speak to that in the presentation. But I do want to again just commend our staff for having gone above and beyond to make this reopening happen successfully. The amount of work has been enormous, and I truly appreciate especially the collaborative nature of the work that's been happening among our faculty and support staff. Our families have also been very supportive of the work we've had to do to reshape our schools. This is not easy for families, particularly for our families of younger children. We appreciate the partnership that we have. We continue to work to calibrate this in order to help families be as successful as possible during the portion of time when students are at home. And then third, our students themselves overall have been absolutely terrific in making the adjustments. It has been a pleasure to connect with those students when I have had the chance to visit classrooms in schools, and principals are reporting the same thing. And really, the level of adaptation in working with us to do what they need to do to follow the safety guidelines and do what's expected of them academically, really in an overall overarching way, has been outstanding. So I want to thank our students as well. Of course, I want to emphasize again, and I know Ms. Freeman will be doing so again soon, that we want to make sure, we want to try to keep it this way. We know that following the public health guidelines to reduce the risk of the spread of COVID is critically important, both inside and outside of school, to use masks, to keep distance, to wash and sanitize hands frequently, and especially also using common sense outside of school, whether that's how families are choosing to socialize or allow their children to socialize. Travel, we have a long weekend coming up. I just want to remind everybody watching that, you know, anybody in our school community, the governor's travel order applies to us all as residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if someone leaves the Commonwealth into a state that is not designated as low-risk, then in order to return to our school community, they either need to be quarantining after their return, or they need to have a negative test within the frame of time that is specified by the state. And if any families have questions about that, they really should contact their school directly, whether that's their school nurse or school administration. But again, that's an expectation. That's not a Shrewsbury Public Schools expectation. That's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts expectation relative to observing that travel order. We do have some data that I can want to share with you. This again is the Johns Hopkins report on a seven-day positivity rate is what Johns Hopkins has been using to measure states against the 5% positivity benchmark. You can see it's a little small there, but you can see from the arrow, Massachusetts, as of a snapshot I took earlier this afternoon, remains as the second lowest rate among the 50 states. And it's stitched up a bit to 1.02% overall, which is up from 0.64% when I last reported two weeks ago. But obviously, relative to the rest of the country, Massachusetts on this measure is extremely strong. The next slide shows our 14-day positivity rate. This just came out this evening and went live at about 6:45 PM. This is the positivity rate on a 14-day measure that the state publishes in their weekly public health report. You can see the link there below where you can access that. We'll also send these slides, or we'll post these slides to our website tomorrow, as we always do as well. But you can see, it's been far below the 5% benchmark, remains far below the 5% benchmark. It's stitched up a bit, kind of a smile line there from August, where it was at 1.23%. We first started reporting this out on August 5th, and it's back up a little bit below that, 1.06% this last week. Obviously, we hope that that moderates and goes back down again. Want to see kind of a roller coaster here going back down, but again, compared to the 5% benchmark, still well below that threshold. The next slide is the color-coded chart that I think people are becoming increasingly familiar with from the media in our presentations. This is the 14-day average of daily cases adjusted per 100,000 people, so that all communities in the state can be compared to one another. Shrewsbury, as of the last report, moved from green status to yellow status because the threshold for that is four cases per 100,000 on a 14-day average. These last, the 14 days measured, which you can see, was from September 20th through October 3rd. The state is reporting for Shrewsbury 31 cases over that period of time, which is 2.21 cases per day. And when all the math is done to adjust that for the average per 100,000 people, comes out to 5.6, which is up from 4.0 when this was last reported last week. And obviously, that's a trend we'd like to see go in the right, you know, to level off or go back. We'd obviously like to go back into green status. And this is, you know, something that we're working. Ms. Freeman and I have a meeting scheduled for Friday morning, I believe, with the Central Massachusetts Regional Public Health Alliance, officials there, who is our local public health authority, talking about and trying to get, you know, some additional information as we can. Obviously, there's a lot of confidentiality around cases, but determining, you know, we're aware of the cases that have been present in our schools, which we'll talk to in a moment. But what's the quality of these other cases? How many are in assisted living facilities? How many might be, you know, there's potential, I've, you know, been told that there's the potential, I've heard about this in other communities, students who may be away at college, they test positive, but their address is a Massachusetts address, so it gets reported as a case in that community. Could be students who are traveling back and forth. There's a whole host of things, whether or not there are, you know, families who may have been exposed in a particular incident, and that there may be a cluster within a single family. But the more we know about what these cases look like, the better informed we can be relative to what the impact potentially could be on our schools and in our community. The next few slides, I just want to speak a little bit in terms of the decision-making process. And I did actually get a couple of emails just prior to this meeting, after we sent out some information today, asking again about what it would take to make a decision for the district to move from its current hybrid model to an all-remote model. And, you know, the key here is observing trends in data. When the state came out with this color-coded system in the summer, the Department of Education indicated that depending on the color coding, here's the expectation for the learning model that you would have, and that's what the plan that I put forward in late summer referred to. Whereas in yellow, it would be hybrid or remote, and red would be remote, based on that kind of statistic. In that plan that I put forward, I also emphasized that as the state adapts and adjusts its guidance, we need to adapt and adjust with that. And I want to make the community and our colleagues aware that based on a communication last week, this is something that we've been hearing from the governor, certainly over the last couple of weeks, and from staff at the state level around public health. But this also communication came to school districts from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that indicates that, you know, and I just quoted the communication we received, so it's very specific. But with these weekly updates with the color-coded metrics, they are emphasizing in the bold print that came from the department, indicating that it's critically important that school districts not make decisions on one week's worth of data or one report. They're recommending using three consecutive weekly reports before making shifts between models, that that's something to strongly consider. And that's an important thing to, that they're learning based on what they're seeing. I think there are situations where in certain communities there may have been a cluster of cases, for example, in a facility for, that's assisted living or a nursing home, that would really have limited to no impact on a school district, yet may have changed that community's color from one to the next. So it's looking at, as well, if you go to the next slide, multiple sets of data. You know, three weeks of reports represents four weeks of data. And to remember that, you know, this is only a single indicator, and working with your local health officials, looking at all the different issues, how are communities trending, what are things looking like. Clearly, the trend in Shrewsbury over the last couple of weeks has been cases increasing. Again, hopefully, that trend shifts or levels off and comes back down. It's something that we're monitoring on a daily basis. And obviously, we're going to be thoughtful about making any decisions we need to make that's in the context of what makes sense in terms of the health and safety of our students and staff and our families. And so with that, I am going to be turning over to Ms. Freeman, our Director of School Nursing. I just think it's important to remember that, you know, we're talking about a prevalence of cases in the community, and we know, you know, with the advent of additional testing, and hopefully, that will be increasing over time, finding cases and isolating those cases and isolating close contacts is the way we're going to stop the spread of COVID. At the same time, you know, what we've designed and what's happening in our schools is designed to prevent the spread, even if someone is asymptomatic and has COVID. And obviously, we've had cases in the district of people with COVID. And the good news is that, you know, we have no evidence to show that that is leading to any connection between the cases that we have had. And that's what we would hope for, based on the precautions we're taking. But I will turn it over to Ms. Freeman and let her speak more specifically to that.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So tonight, Brian, thank you. The next slide. I just want to jump right in, since Dr. Sawyer's been going through statistics in general. These are our district-specific statistics. And these are the numbers from the start of school right up until today. So we work with the Central Massachusetts Regional Public Health Alliance, and our colleagues there have asked that we not separate, separate out our cases into students and staff in order to protect everyone's privacy as much as possible. So these numbers are the total of students and staff. So so far, we have identified 10 positive cases. The breakdown of that is one case at each spring, Floral, Coolidge, and Sherwood, and then six cases at the high school. And although that seems like a lot at the high school, we have to remember how big the population of the high school is compared to our other buildings. So it does even out a little bit. I'd also like to, so the next number is close contacts, which from those 10 cases, we've identified 21 close contacts within school. And I'd like to talk a little bit about how we get to that number, or how we get to identifying those individuals as close contacts. So we do that through contact tracing. And I would probably have had a slide to tell you more about contact tracing, but I was contact tracing this afternoon, so I didn't have time to make a slide. So I will try to explain it as well as I can without a visual. So I first want to start by just saying that contact tracing is not something new that came along because of COVID-19. It's been done for a long time for other communicable diseases, things like chicken pox or measles. We have limited experience with doing this in school in the past. If more recently, we've had pertussis circulating, whooping cough circulating in the community, and we have been made aware of a very low number of cases of that. And we work with the same public health colleagues. And we look at where the person who has been, who they've been in contact with, and what their interactions with those people look like to determine who is a close contact. And the definitions and what we're looking at varies a little bit, kind of disease to disease, the timeframe you might need to look at. But for the most part, it's the same. And so contact tracing is a well-established practice that we're just doing a lot more of right now because of COVID-19. So just a little kind of snapshot of what's involved when we contact trace. When we receive the information about a positive case from either a family of a student or a staff person, we may receive the information directly from public health, but I do have to thank our staff and our families because so far in all of these cases, we have heard directly from the family or staff who is positive, which is very helpful because that's really the most direct and quickest way for us to get the information. If it has to go through the public health system, there may be a delay. So I thank people for being forthcoming and really reaching out to us quickly when they get that information. So when we do get the information, the nurses and I start a checklist and look at all aspects of that person's day at school. So for a student, for example, we start with how they got to school. If they took the bus, we need to look at what contacts might be involved in the bus. We look at their classroom. At an elementary school, that's typically limited to one classroom because kids are staying in the same place most of the day. But we also have to look at any services, related services that they might be being pulled for at the middle school and the high schools. Kids are moving from class to class. So in those cases, we have several classrooms that we need to look at. We look at lunch. We look at what recess looks like. And for students, we always check to see if they have siblings in the system, because a sibling would automatically be a close contact as a household member. So that person would need to be identified as a close contact. For a staff, it's pretty similar. We look at how they come to school. Obviously, staff don't take the bus, but some do carpool, so we need to kind of consider that. We look at what their classroom setup is like, if they're pulling kids for small groups within their classroom, or if they're a specialist who's moving from place to place, where they ate lunch, who they ate with. We make sure every, you know, the distancing is being maintained. And again, if some of our staff have family in the district, so if there's a household member involved, then that would impact the close contacts. So the nurses and I set out to gather all of this information based on a set of questions that our public health nurse asks, so we can anticipate the questions she's going to ask. We gather all of that information and then consult with her on the phone to review all of the details. And she helps us to determine who is or is not a close contact. Some of the situations are pretty straightforward. Some are a little bit more complicated. And if Pat Reckman, the public health nurse that we work closely with, has any questions herself, we do have the option of consulting with the state-level Department of Public Health for the more complicated questions. The epidemiologists there are great for clarifying any kind of little specifics that we may not have come across before and need information on. So once we've gone through that process and we have our list of people who are potentially close contacts, we, the nurses and I, reach out to those families or staff to instruct them, inform them that they have been identified as a potential close contact. We need to do that without sharing the identity of the positive individual. So they're just informed that there's a positive case in their building, for example, and that contact tracing has revealed that they may be a close contact, and that they'll need to quarantine for 14 days from the date of their last contact with that individual. And we also encourage all students to get tested and require that staff have a COVID test if they are a close contact, so that we can do more contact tracing if we have another positive case. To date, we have not had a close contact come back with a positive test. So that's proof that our mitigation strategies are working, which is wonderful. I do want to be clear that this process is done individually with each case that we learn about. We got this question from a staff person today, asking if we do this every time. And yes, there's no way to not do it every time. Each case is individual, and we need to look at where that person has been and who they've come in contact with. So it can be time-consuming, but is worth the time that we put in and is part of the effort to stop the spread. It's really important for us to have any contacts quarantined, so that they're not potentially passing it on to other people. And again, we get lots of questions about people being contacts to these close contacts and what they need to do. And contacts of a contact do not need to do anything special. That includes if one sibling in a family, if there's a student who is identified as a close contact, they have to quarantine. But if they have other siblings at home, those siblings can continue to come to school unless the person who is a close contact becomes symptomatic or tests positive. And then that would trigger the process for that student. But that's a question that we get a lot. So contacts of contacts are okay to be in school. And we encourage them to be here, because that's why we're all here, so kids can be in school. So I'd just like to kind of wrap up by reviewing the mitigation strategies, again, that Dr. Sawyer mentioned, and just kind of mention how they're, it's going for us so far. So the first strategy is mask-wearing. And I have to say that I'm really pleased to see how consistently students at all levels are wearing masks, and of course, staff as well. Certainly, there are some kids and adults who need reminders at times. We do have some students with disabilities who are unable to tolerate a mask at all times because of their disability. But all of them have program and play programming in place to work on tolerance and are building that as we go. So overall, I think mask-wearing really has gone better than a lot of people expected. There was some worry about students in particular not being compliant, but we've seen very little issues with that. Close contacts, again, our observations and the contact tracing that I just spoke about, that we've done, has shown that people really are trying to maintain distancing, and that the way our classrooms and lunchrooms, et cetera, are set up is helping to keep people consistently six feet apart. And that's limiting the close contacts as we do contact trace. Washing and sanitizing hands, I'm quite sure is happening frequently, as evidenced by how regularly we need to refill the hand sanitizer stations that are across the district. And staying home when sick is the final strategy listed. I, again, can attest that our nurses are making lots of phone calls every day to students or and staff who have called in to report signs and symptoms, which is exactly what we need them to do. So we appreciate their compliance with this. And as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, this at-home screening does also include the travel order. And we ask people to make sure they're paying attention to that when they're doing their screening before coming into school. So overall, I'd say the strategies are being adhered to consistently, which is great. I do think we all need to get to a place where we feel comfortable both giving and receiving feedback or reminders about, you know, your mask is falling down, or separate a little bit, you're a little bit too close together. And that's fine. I think we just need to feel comfortable reminding each other, so that we can all be in this together. Working together is what's going to make this continue to work. So I'd just like to echo Dr. Sawyer's earlier thanks to students, staff, families, for working together with us on this and complying with all the protocols that we have in place.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. I just want to reiterate what an outstanding job both Ms. Freeman is doing, as well as her team of nurses, you know, through something that obviously is more complicated and takes, you know, an enormous amount of time. But obviously, we need to follow the steps that are, that are important to make sure we're doing everything to do the contact tracing appropriately. So to wrap up, you know, sort of the COVID medical part of this presentation, I just want to reiterate again, as far as, you know, we have had cases, obviously, we'd like to see that. We're hoping that that will abate and that we will see fewer. We'll have to see what happens, of course, across the state and in central Massachusetts generally. But as far as making any changes to whether or not we'd be in hybrid, as we remain in yellow, I think it's pretty clear we would want to be remaining in hybrid unless, of course, we see evidence of spread in a particular school. We may, we may need to close a particular school for a short period of time if we feel that we're seeing spread in a certain place, you know, if we're seeing it across the district or spiking in the community as a whole, we may want to hit the pause button. And again, we're looking at multiple sources of data. But as the state has indicated very strongly, they're really pressing upon local districts to be thoughtful about not making a decision based on one, the one color-coded piece based on one report. And so I'll be updating that plan to reflect that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't go remote if we're in yellow because, or especially at a particular school. But it doesn't mean if we flip into red, all of a sudden, as a community, depending on why that's happening, we're going to be looking at that. And we'll be consulting with the experts in the field of public health and medicine, considering those data trends and considering the context that that data is in, in terms of what it represents. So we're going to be as thoughtful and judicious as we possibly can, again, with our number-one priority being everyone's health and safety. But I do appreciate everyone working together to maintain the mitigation strategies, that even if someone is positive, doesn't know it, they're asymptomatic, it's wearing the masks, it's staying apart, it's sanitizing and washing hands, it's not coming to school when you're sick, not going out when you're sick into the community. All those things help. And I know it's been tiring for people. I know people are tired of following these. It's human nature. We have to have the self-discipline to do that. And it's so important that our kids are in school. As we've talked about, it's a balanced look at risk. There are risks when kids aren't in school. And we're trying to mitigate those pieces by being able to maintain the program that we have in the safest way we possibly can. So with that, at this point, I'm going to turn it over first to Ms. LaRue, and then Ms. Clouder. Talk a little bit first about an IT update that the school committee, I think, is interested in, as well as Ms. Clouder, in terms of the curriculum and instruction. I'm sorry, was there something?
Ms. Everett, I think you have.
Sure. I realize we're moving people around just before we move to next section. I just want to really support, I have heard many comments from parents saying, so how many positive cases is it going to take for us to close a school? And I just want to really support Dr. Sawyer, the approach both you and the public health, health team and all the nurses are taking, that this is not a, we see one number change, and then we make a decision that impacts 6,500 students and hundreds of staff without really rooting it out and making sure we're making the right decision. So I think that's really crucially important for people to understand. They, they want this to be simple. They, they want this to be simple and everything about COVID is not simple. And so, it's, it's, it's complex and I really, really support that, although it's harder to communicate and explain to people what, what we're doing and why we're doing it. It certainly makes, makes a lot of sense. I did have a question for, for Noel, if it's, if it's possible. I'm sorry, I know this moving chairs thing. I think probably in, in my first couple of months on the school committee, the presentation I remembered the most was your presentation pre-COVID where you told me that there were 66,000 office visits. And I, that number has stuck with me and I think about how many times my kids have been in your, in the various nurses' office. So, with utmost respect to your team, what you are taking on in addition to all of that, that you've just described, is huge. Recognizing though, that we have half as many kids in the building any, any, any one time, I'm just wondering how staffing is going for you and your team, being able to manage all that. And sort of a flip side of this, we know that there are so many symptoms that keep kids and staff out. What we're seeing on the absentee side, if that, if that's something you're sort of familiar with, to give us a sense that, that causes other challenges for us, right, about kids, kids stay up to speed and staffing challenges? So, kind of how, how some of that is, is what we're seeing in the first four weeks?
Sure. So, thank you for your kind words. My, the nurses are busy all the time. I would say this year is a different busy. There is a lot more of the phone calls and making, kind of, getting more information about why someone is out and determining whether they can come back the next day or if they need to get tested and what that whole process needs to look like. We are certainly still seeing some of our typical visits. We have kids with chronic illnesses who are in and out of the nurse's office out of necessity on a regular basis. We have kids who have non-COVID-related issues that are, again, in and out just here and there. And they are seeing, I, I didn't include tonight, I don't have in front of me, the number of students who have been dismissed for COVID-related symptoms. But the, you know, I'd say each office is sending home a handful of students, you know, the smaller schools probably two and the high school probably, you know, four to six kids, some days, and then some days we're not sending home as many kids. But there are some students who develop symptoms in school and need to go home. So, it's, it's just a very different flow in our offices than typical years. We always say that the first couple of weeks of any school year, it feels like the students haven't found the nurse's office yet. And I think that was just a little delayed. I did talk to particularly the high school this week and they said, "They found us. They remember we're here." So, I think we may see those kind of typical visits pick up as students just kind of settle into the year and find their place. But as far as support goes, I'm happy to say that we have been able to fill one of the two long-term sub positions that we had posted. So, we have a new staff person starting with us on Tuesday of next week. So, that will be a great support just to have an extra set of hands to know that if a nurse is out, we can plug that hole with a person, experienced person. And I have been relying on my day-to-day subs to just come in as extra support for the nurses, kind of as much as possible. So, that's been helpful as well. Did I answer all your questions? Thank you very much.
Since Ms. Freeman is here, is there any other questions on this piece of it before we go forward? Dale?
Just a couple of things. One is, you trace the contacts of these positive cases within the schools.
Right.
So, I'm assuming the Department of Public Health additionally tries to trace contacts in the community?
Yes. Thank you for making that point. Exactly. So, we do the tracing within the school environment and then either the Worcester Department of Public Health staff or the Community Tracing Collaborative will do the remainder of the tracing for, you know, outside-of-school contacts, friends and family that they may have been in contact with.
Do you have an idea of how many cases are positive in the contact tracing? How often that actually turns up a positive case?
Just in general or in our cases?
In general.
I don't. I have said a couple of times, I would love to have that statistic and it's probably out there somewhere. It's a great question that I can ask when we meet later this week with the larger public health group to see if they have that information. I have a sense that it's low.
Yeah.
Because with all of the strategies that we have in place, your risk of contacting it, if you have had a mask on and tried to stay distant and I think your, your chances of becoming positive are low and the, the contact tracing just kind of ensures that you're home and quarantined in the kind of more unlikely event that you become positive. I think when it's a household member who's a close contact and you're at home in that environment and you don't, aren't wearing the mask and distancing and all of that, I would guess that those, the percentage of that type of close contact converting to positive may be higher. But that's not information that I actually have. I can try to see if it's out there.
I think the other thing you said, which deserves highlighting, is the notion that the positive cases are contacting you directly and not relying on some organization to contact you. And that is so important. It, it cuts the reaction time and it cuts the number of contacts because otherwise, days would be going by without you being able to trace people.
Exactly.
That's a, a very important thing, which I'm, I'm so glad that the families around here are offering.
Agreed. Yep. It's been very helpful to get things in progress as soon as we can. So.
Jason?
Just a comment related to our positive cases and I do want to express my satisfaction and confidence with the superintendent and his team for the communications around positive cases. I know, as Ms. Heffernan alluded to, there are certainly those in the community who are worried by that news. But I do tend to hear more often than not residents and parents expressing confidence in the district's handling of the situation when they see that information coming out. I think that sending out those notifications anytime that there's been a positive case with what details are available is helpful in that it breeds confidence. Information breeds confidence. Silence breeds fear. And I think being transparent and open has gone a long way towards helping our community understand that this district takes this very seriously and that we're committed to being transparent about that. So, I just wanted to extend my, express my gratitude for that approach that we've taken.
I have a question that was recently on the news, a study Tufts is doing on pool testing at certain schools for COVID. Is there, are you hearing anything from DPH about that maybe becoming more prevalent or something that we might eventually be part of?
I haven't heard of it becoming kind of the routine. I am aware of a district who were, were part of a pilot testing and they, that the testing site that they piloted with has the option of pool testing and that was kind of the first time I had heard of that. It's an interesting concept. So, for those who don't know what pool testing is, you would take a whole classroom of students and if it's a saliva test, for example, everyone gives their test tube of saliva and then at the lab, they take a little bit of each person's saliva and test that pooled saliva. And if it comes back negative, you now know everyone in that group is negative. If it comes back positive, then you need to run everyone's individual test to see who's positive. But it saves some resources in that you're, if everyone tests negative, you've just run one test instead of 15 or whatever the classroom would be. So, it's definitely an interesting concept and I haven't heard of it becoming more widespread. But it will be interesting to see if it does.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Ms. Freeman while she's at the table? Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Turn it back to Dr. Sawyer.
I'll turn it over to Mr. LaRue for an update around our information technology.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So, as we discussed at the last meeting, there's been a pretty significant increase in the number of tech support requests that we've received. We call them tickets in our ticketing system. This year, since a couple of days before the school year started through last night, we had received 2,708 tickets. That compares to 1263 for the same time period last year. So, more than double this year. Just to kind of compare device ratios, one-to-one device ratios across some comparable districts and some local regional districts near to us, we have 842 devices per, or 842 one-to-one devices per tier-one technician or instructional technology specialist. Couple of other districts that are higher are Milton and Arlington. But most of the districts that we checked in with were lower, some pretty significantly. Chalmersburg was a little over 500. Burlington was just under 500. Westboro, under 500, as well as Wachusett. Grafton was a little over 300 and Northborough, Southborough was around 200, 300 or so, less than 300 actually. So, try to, to try to address that. As the committee knows from Dr. Sawyer, the district is in the process of adding two positions to the IT department, two IT support specialists. That will bring us to one IT support specialist per school except for Parker Road and we would have two at the high school. And given the varying size, sizes and workloads of the buildings, the thought is that the folks at the smaller buildings would be able to help folks at the higher, at the larger buildings and also take a higher share of the parent tech support request that can be handled remotely. So, these positions will help us tremendously. Just to look at what the ratio would be with three positions, that brings us down to 655, still higher than the, the other districts, but it's making progress toward parity. So, again, we feel that these positions will be very helpful to us and given how important it is with the current road environment and also for when students are not in the building, the stakes are a lot higher for teachers to, and it's so much more important to get timely tech support. So, we feel that this will help us with that. And that's all I have for now.
So, this was in response to some of the concerns the committee expressed and the reality that, you know, we were looking carefully to see if we were going to get a significant drop-off in tech, tech tickets and requests for service. That really hasn't been happening. I think just the sheer volume of what we're dealing with now in terms of the number of devices and, and there's really no other way to address that and is so central to students being able to do their, their schoolwork. To not have that level of support would be very problematic, of course. So, appreciate being able to do that. Mr. LaRue and his team continue to do an outstanding job, being as efficient as they possibly can and giving really, really high-level customer service to everyone who's, who's involved. So, thank you for that. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clouder, who'll give us a brief update on curriculum instruction and assessment.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. I wanted to start out as you did with just an acknowledgement of how nice it is to see school supplies stacking up, new books and smiles in schools. Every time I'm in our classrooms, I'm reminded of just what we've achieved in bringing students back. So, this is Mr. Soto Garcia, who is an English as a Second Language teacher at Sherwood and his colleagues are often the first point of contact for families that are new to the district who are, have a language other than English at home. And you can see here, they're learning already to cite text evidence and doing it with a smile. And I just, I have that on my desktop to remind me when things are challenging of just how important it is to have that regular contact with kids in school. So, I thank all of our educators who are working with students to help them adjust to the new cohorts and, and schedules that they're managing and all of the families at home for helping students to do that adjustment as well. It's, it's no small thing, I think, to be able to welcome our students back and to see them reconnecting with each other and with their teachers. So, the other piece I want to say is that we are still imperfect and improving. I love this photo because this is Mr. Lapamardo. And for those of you that don't know him, he's a member of the Performing Arts Department and leading the chorus here in this picture. And in his words, "This is collaboration at its finest." They're combining classes to be able to sing outdoors in the good weather and I think it depicts really well how teachers and students have been challenged to adapt and the successes that result from their efforts. There's a lot of creativity and workarounds in place as we encounter barriers. And I think the fact that we have a mindset of how can we surmount this barrier is a real testament to our success so far. At the same time, some successes come easier than others and we know that we're not going to be able to sing outdoors as the weather gets colder. And, you know, with the support of Director Tom O'Toole and his department, they've been really looking at how can they give students and especially students in cohort D singing experiences even though they can't all physically be together. And they, you know, in order to solve that one question, they've explored four different software programs and spent 18 hours thinking about what does it mean for students on the recording end and what does it mean to blend it on the educator end so that you have a performance piece. And, and just as Mr. Lapamardo has been thinking about that from a singing perspective, his colleagues are also thinking about that from a playing and composing pieces perspective. So, as, you know, as we look at new expectations, one things that has emerged across cohorts is that with higher expectations, we have to manage more planning on both the student end and also the educator end. And we've learned in these first weeks to expect kind of a range of skills and evidence in both students and their ability to adapt and manage the stress of that and educators and the number of new learnings that they're, that they're engaged in from reminders about gently, you know, your mask is slipping, don't stand so close to me because we're a collaborative bunch. And also kind of thinking about, as you're managing this morning meeting and you've got students in front of you and you've got students tuning in from home, you've got to not turn your back on the students in front of you as you're trying to pay, pay attention to the experience of students at home. And it seems like a small thing, but I really want to acknowledge that there's a lot of effort engaged in making the experience better. At the same time, you know, we know that there are some things that are just clunky and, and my conversations with families this week, particularly families in cohort D at the high school level, I've gotten some good feedback on the things that you need to tweak and work on to make that experience better for people. So, we're helping students to meet the demands of, of higher expectations for workflow and we're helping to think about what is a reasonable workflow for students, particularly when they're working asynchronously. And maybe the answer to that question for students that are younger is different from students who are older. And, you know, making that nuance, those nuanced adjustments is key. Next slide, please. So, calibrating is key is what I've said, you know, we're looking at balancing, kind of what is the load for independent practice? How much practice should students engage in before they receive feedback? And how much of the work that we're asking kids to do is about accountability versus work product? So, some of the things that we assign when we have in-person schooling translate really well to an online environment. So, you can see at the top here, this is Mr. Millarella's class creating their version of a door opener that's a safe contact. And you can see you create the plan with Tinkercad and then you can run the code with the, with the laser printer and see how well the code works. If the object doesn't come out as you planned it in the code, you can kind of see that feedback immediately. Mr. Millarella doesn't need to call and say, you know, this doesn't work because kids can see that kind of feedback. But not all tasks are like that. And so, in some ways, we've had to kind of reimagine teaching and learning and think a little bit about if I can't see them, but I know they're engaged in practice, what is some reasonable evidence of that practice and how often do I check in? At the bottom, you can see the PE department. This is Mr. Butterfield's class. Kids are staying socially distant and collaborating to learn orienteering skills outside. And again, I think this is a, a nice example of people teaching, thinking about how to hold on to the way that kids collaborate naturally and yet how we keep them spread out around the campus and working in small enough groups that they can safely distance. So, teachers continue to learn too, just as our students are figuring out how to balance all the different demands in their work schedules. Teachers are thinking about how to adjust to the diverse needs in each cohort and how to keep kind of pace with cohorts so that kids are roughly at the same space and learning plans make sense for families. And at the same time, we know that we have students in cohort A, for example, that are in four days a week. And so, how do we balance instructions so that that's really differentiated for the, those kids? Because some kids would benefit from a repeat of some instruction, but not all instruction. And thinking about how you manage that within your school day is a new level of complexity for us as we engage in learning plans this year. So, if you've seen this slide and you think, huh, I've seen that picture, it, it's familiar because my colleagues have asked me to repeat the message to the community is, as we are implementing curriculum, we're still teaching the basics. And in the past, teachers did use the first six weeks to introduce new content, but also introduce routines, reinforce expectations, build kind of community culture together. And some of that was visible, but it wasn't all visible to parents. And so, that is taking a little bit longer because we have, you know, And so that is taking a little bit longer, because we have, you know, cultures coming together across on Zoom, and because we have kids in school in person less often, and this balance and transition. But it's just as important. In fact, I, I think the teachers are learning that going slow to go fast is a really important thing to consider, especially knowing that kids are kind of out of the routine of doing school, both because of the summer break and because we had different expectations last spring. So how this looks, as teachers are helping students learn new routines, is, you know, teaching kids how to advocate, how they ask for help. We have kids at the elementary level who are very enthusiastic about CSO, and so kind of like adults in Zoom chats, you know, engage in, I might share something with you that's not really relevant, I'm just excited about it. And teachers are trying to balance building relationships with kids by responding to what they're sending, and also thinking, I've got 128 notifications this afternoon, and I need to go home now. And so trying to think about what things we push out through, through CSO, or our learning platform, Schoology, at the upper level, and then how many assignments we're asking people to collect and respond to is something that we're, we're calibrating. And similarly, we're working on SEL competencies, social-emotional learning, with some new resources. And so it's exciting and timely, and I don't think there could be a more important time to think about building relationships since kids' social-emotional competencies, but it's another piece of the puzzle to fit into the academic day. So I guess this is just to say we're, we're going slow to go fast later, and it's really important that kids understand and know how to manage their workflow, and, and that looks different than it did when kids were in school all week. And that's just as true at the high school, having, having talked to teachers at the high school this week, as it is for our youngest learners. And finally, we're engaging in, in professional learning as a community, and thinking about, you know, how we build on some of our strategic goals in our plan, specifically around equity. So we're very excited that we're going to host two keynote speakers on Friday, Dr. Irvin Leon Scott and Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson. Both of them will be thinking about the issue of equity, why is it important now, and how does it relate to the multi-tiered systems of support that we've talked about with staff in the first 10 days of training? And then how do we build more inclusive and diverse communities? How do we create kind of a culture of belonging for everybody? We know that we have some feedback from alumni, that we have work to do there. And so, well, Dr. Scott will talk about the why statement of equity. Dr. Amonte Jackson will focus on the how statement of equity, and I'm really looking forward to hearing them, because they are both really talented speakers and very engaging. So we will also find some time in the day to provide teachers with some of that collaboration and planning time that they've really been missing as we've had shortened weeks. So we will have one keynote, a break for collaborative, collaborative planning, and then a second keynote in the afternoon after lunch. And I know you guys are all very busy and have other jobs, that this is just something you do because you're good citizens, but if you're available to join us, I did send that flyer to you earlier today.
So thank you, Ms. Clodder. And again, just wrapping up, saying again, we're so proud of our staff, who continue to go above and beyond, on behalf of our students, our families who are supporting that work, and our students themselves for adapting in this new environment. And with that, happy to take any questions you have for Ms. LaRue, Ms. Clodder, or overall.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Jason?
Question for Ms. Clodder. I know that when we first introduced remote learning on an emergency basis in the spring, there were certainly some instances, as there were everywhere, where students may be not engaging or engaging less. Obviously, remote learning is being done differently now, and most of our students are, have some form or other of in-person presence a few days a week. Are there still instances of students who are either not engaging, or there's very low engagement? Are there any consistencies there, strategies that have been employed to try to deal with that, or is it something that, that largely isn't happening with the in-person component?
It is happening. It's still a challenge, and for, for a variety of different reasons. Sometimes because kids are young and engaging them is tricky, sometimes because family needs more tech support than, you know, than we've provided so far, not, not in terms of making the device function, but in using the device and negotiating the platform of handing in work. You know, if I think about how many times I've had to show my mother how to set up her cable, something similar to that, in terms of, some people need, just need more time. And then some kids aren't engaging, and we don't know why. So at, at each building, teams have created kind of an Excel sheet to track who's, who we're concerned about in terms of lack of engagement, why are we concerned? And then who's reached out to the family, kind of what the response is, do we have to modify the workload and/or provide extra support? And those look a little different across levels, but, you know, those are all already in use in terms of thinking about, you know, those multi-tiered systems of support, where here's what everybody gets, here's the core and more, and here's more and more. So we're using that in conjunction with our approach to think about how we can better support students if they're not engaging.
And just a quick follow-up. I mean, is this, is this mostly with students who are in Cohort D who are fully remote, or do we see some students who are B and C, two days in person, but then struggling with engagement on the remote days as well?
I'm glad you asked. It's both. I think part of it is managing those asynchronous days, and just as we have some students that are engaging less when they're remote than they are in person, we have some students that are over-engaging. So having to say, you know, I know that you could work through an entire unit, but that might be why you're feeling really exhausted right now. Like, let's slow down the pace. And so when I mentioned Cohort D at the high school, for example, we loaded a lot of content, and it seems to me we maybe need to adjust some things, particularly in math and science, because we have some, some students who are on the other end of the spectrum, working tremendously hard to try to make progress, and not, not balancing the workflow on the other end. So we're still at the early stages. I mean, part of it is that we have some new students who have joined us, and they've joined Cohort D, so if you're new to a district and new to a school and you're learning remotely, that's a different challenge. In some cases, we've had some language barriers, and we needed to use interpreters. And part of the challenge there is thinking about interpreters that also know the tech platform. So if the issue is learning how to post something in CSO, and you have an interpreter that speeches the language but doesn't understand the workings of CSO, it just takes an extra step. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of different reasons for kids being unengaged, but so far, it's not that they haven't been engaged at all, it's that they've been kind of inconsistent, and we're trying to troubleshoot around that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the questions or comments? Thank you to everyone. I want to thank Dr. Sawyer for, you know, talking about, you know, looking at what color our zone is, and how we are going to be very mindful as we make decisions based on what data and trends are, and, you know, really looking at the context of all of that information to be really important. And I also want to thank, thank Dr. Sawyer for, and, you know, Ms. LaRue, looking at that IT support. I think it was desperately needed. We are becoming more technology-driven, and it's that tool, like we're all sitting here with a laptop or iPad, I mean, we all need technology, and if it doesn't work, you can't do anything. So fully support that type of an addition, and I think it's something we're going to need going forward, regardless of a pandemic or not. So thank you, everyone. Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
No, just the team continued to do an outstanding job. I'm so grateful for our leadership team and all the staff for the effort they're putting in. And again, we'll continue to learn from how things are going, and we're going to be working to, every day, get a little bit better.
Thank you. Okay, next, under Policy 325, which is Prevention of Physical Restraint and Requirements if Used. It was last updated in April of 2019, and there are technical updates that need to be made to the state-required policy, as the district has changed the training program that is used for physical restraint and de-escalation of student behaviors, from SOL to Safety Care. And Dr. Sawyer will provide specifics on this.
Thank you. Again, this is really a technical update to this policy. It's a state-required policy. In the document you have in your packet, you see there's, you know, either red text or strikeouts, trying to, you know, flesh out a little bit the fact that, you know, we're taking a tiered approach to this, that it's about supporting student well-being, of course, that we have changed our training program to a program that we think is more expansive, including, you know, not only the restraint training, which is required, but also, you know, student behaviors, functions of their behaviors, de-escalation, which is really key, because, you know, the idea, as you can see in the title of the policy, is trying to avoid restraint whenever possible. Typically, a restraint situation will apply to a student who might have some significant special needs and may have difficulty regulating themselves in a, in a school environment because of their disability. Sometimes it might be because of a significant emotional behavioral issue. But again, the de-escalation piece is key. The program we're doing is combined and derived from Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA. We have lots of ABA technicians who work with our students, who are on the autism spectrum, might have similar disabilities. And so you see in the updated text that it just reflects the practices that the district's engaged with, so that our policy reflects our actuality. So a couple of minor language changes in addition to that, and would be happy to answer any questions the committee has. Since it is just a technical update, felt it was, if the committee's comfortable, would recommend voting this evening to update the language so that it reflects what we're doing in the district.
Great. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. May I have a motion that the committee vote to approve the updated Policy 325, Prevention of Physical Restraint and Requirements if Used, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, we are going to have our annual report on bullying statistics, and Dr. Sawyer will also provide that information.
Thank you. You have a memo in your packet, and this is a yearly report where we show you the data year over year. Again, it's important to note that this is a, in the sense that this is a mandated report, or that the state requires us to keep these statistics, in that with the anti-bullying law that was passed a number of years ago, bullying has a very specific legal definition in this context for schools, where it has to be a report, a repeated behavior that causes either physical or emotional harm. So in terms of reporting out situations that qualify as these kind of repeated situations, they're very limited in terms of what's overall. Of course, because we're a human organization, and we have young people who are developing their sense of right and wrong, and what's appropriate and not appropriate, we, of course, do have examples of poor behavior or inappropriate behavior that we deal with as a matter of course. These statistics don't take that into account. These are very specifically, if there's been an allegation of bullying, of repeated behavior, they're investigated according to our policy, and this statistic gives you what qualified. So in this past year, we had nine allegations of bullying. There were three that were found to be qualified, those were all at the middle level. There was one allegation in elementary, four at middle, and four at high school. There were three at the middle school that qualified as bullying, that involved two different aggressors and three different targets. That was, you know, obviously, lower numbers in the previous year, in part, certainly that could be because we were only in school for two-thirds of the year physically because of the shutdown, so obviously, we have to take that into account for any statistics for last year that may be affected by the, the school closure. With that, you know, there's some other statistics there about the type of incidents. Two of them, you know, three of them all occurred at school, two of them were verbal, one was involved physicality. And, you know, I think the other piece of context, you know, we continue to try to work to build positive in, in school cultures where kids feel safe. You know, we're trying to continue to minimize any kind of behaviors that are hurtful or harmful, even if they're not technically bullying. But I think it's important to note, of course, and as Ms. Clodder referred to, we're doing some training on Friday, given the last spring's equity audit, the, the communications we've had from students and alumni regarding concerns about the treatment that may have happened in the past for differences in race or ethnicity, sexual orientation, and so forth, we have to continue to look how our students are treating one another, and look at those through a lens of equity and anti-racism, and that's work we'll be doing with the Coalition, which will be getting started up in earnest now that we're through our reopening phase, and that will be an important thing to look through. One other thing that I would just remind the committee of, and those watching, is that at the very top of our homepage, there's a flag that says, a link where you can click on it to submit a school safety tip. That is a place where people can make an anonymous report if there's a concern about any concerning behavior, and that could involve bullying as well. Any reports that are listed there, as soon as we receive them the, the next working day, they're investigated and determine whether or not, you know, we have to take any, any action based on what's provided. So that is another resource for people. Obviously, people are welcome to reach out to their school administrators confidentially, but if you'd like to utilize the website, there is that function on our homepage to submit a school safety tip. So that is the information I have for you for the annual report, and I'd be happy to take any questions the committee has.
Any questions or comments on this? Nope. Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned the Coalition work, and will, you know, help along these lines, looking at any allegations or issues that come forward. So I think that's another good avenue that we have available to our district. Okay. Okay, next, under policy, we have the appointment of Superintendent as Representative to the Assabit Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. And the mission of the Assabit Valley Collaborative is to provide effective and efficient services to meet current and evolving needs of member communities, to promote student success and community integration. The AVC Board of Directors meets monthly during the school year, and more often is needed, and each year, the committee must vote to appoint the superintendent as Representative to the Assabit Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. Anything you'd like to add to that, Dr. Sawyer?
No, it's certainly a rule that's important. The other superintendents of the member districts and I do meet on a regular basis, convened by the Executive Director, Dr. Kathy Cummins, in order to do the business of the collaborative, which remains in a strong position financially. You'll get updates over the course of the year, as is the state regulation, but to have that organization available to provide services that otherwise would be difficult for individual districts to supply on their own, just because of economy of scale. But it also does serve as a professional resource, and certainly, some of the work we've been doing, I know that Ms. Clodder, for example, has been reaching out to her counterparts in other districts. There's a lot of professional Jaba-like pieces, and it's certainly been helpful in meetings in addition to the business of the collaborative. Monthly, the superintendents do talk about other issues that are, we're facing, and obviously, in recent months, that's been particularly important. So it's, I'm glad that we're a part of the, of this organization, and I'm pleased to represent the district as the representative on the Board of Directors.
Any questions or comments on this appointment? Nope. Okay. We have a motion that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, as its Representative to the Assabit Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Collins will provide a update on the fiscal year 2021 grants.
This is an annual report to the School Committee and a request for, for one of your approval to receive a variety of grant funds from federal and state resources. This is a requirement by statute, that's why we bring it to the School Committee on an annual basis. There's a chart provided in your report that shows for fiscal '21, as of this point in time, we've been allocated $3,662,870 in federal and state grants to fund our operations for the current fiscal year. That's up about $1.5 million over the prior year, and primarily due to the two top grants that are COVID-related grants. So as I've reported before, as part of the coronavirus pandemic updates, that we've received, two grants thus far. First is the so-called COVID Relief School Reopening Grant for $1.39 million, and that was based upon our student enrollment and receiving $225 per pupil. That's a grant that's received universally across the Commonwealth at that same rate. And then secondly, the CARES Act, our so-called ESER Emergency, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, we've been allocated $162,060, and that's based upon our relative measured wealth as a, a community, using the Title I allocation formula. So that really is what accounts for the increase of just under $1.5 million more dollars for this fiscal year than last year, and again, it's all COVID-related. And I'll just remind the School Committee and the community that those dollars, of course, need to be spent specifically on COVID-related direct expenditures. It's not like an open checkbook, you can spend it on anything you want, it has to be COVID-related in its use, and those funds need to be expended by December 30th of 2020, and then they expire. So with that, you can see the array of other annual grants that we typically receive, and those funds are targeted funding for and those funds are targeted funding for primarily special education purposes, or in the case of Title I, usually reading services. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the school committee might have. There is a recommended motion at the bottom of your first page of your report for the school committee to consider in terms of accepting these grant funds and using them for the purposes intended.
Any questions or comments? And I know this is important, funding prior to the COVID, I mean, issues with the budget, that we are always happy to receive any of the grant funding that we can to add to our budget. Okay, if there's no questions or comments, Dr. Sawyer, you have any questions or comments?
Certainly, I want to thank Mr. Collins and those in his office, particularly Kim Fitzpatrick, for managing. Some of these obviously have a lot of paperwork and various elements that have to go into them to do the applications. Ms. Cloder also is involved with that in some of these grants, and Donna Manzoli, her assistant, they're critical funding pieces. Obviously, the COVID funding, which comes in the form of a grant, I am hopeful, not particularly optimistic at the moment, but I am hopeful that the federal leadership will get its act together and provide the funding that local municipalities and schools desperately need to move through the rest of this year in the face of all the expenses we've had to take on due to COVID. It is disappointing to know that that hasn't happened yet, and hopefully, at some points, when the politics of it gets out of the way and the recognition, I think there's general recognition that local districts, school districts across the nation are in great need, and the federal government is, you know, a key instrument to be able to assist with that. So hopefully, we'll be coming to you with some good news about that at some point in the future during the school year. In the meantime, we are going to, you know, spend the dollars that we do have as wisely as possible, based on what the needs are, to move the program forward and under the conditions we face. But with that, I certainly recommend that you vote to accept the funds.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the committee vote to accept all FY '21 grant funds noted in the enclosed chart and use such funds for their intended purpose?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have the appointment to the Board of Directors of Shrewsbury Media Connection, Inc. In September of 2018, the board vote, the committee voted to appoint Mr. Brian Shu as its appointed member to the Board of Directors of Shrewsbury Media Connection, Inc. Mr. Shu's term on the SMC Board as the member appointed by the committee will end by the next SMC Annual Meeting on December 14th of 2020. And Mr. Shu has expressed interest in being reappointed, and Dr. Sawyer will make a recommendation that Mr. Shu be reappointed to the role.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. The, Mr. Shu has done an outstanding job by all accounts, representing the community on this board and as the school department's representative, or appointee, I should say. Obviously, there's a lot of programming that Shrewsbury Media Connection provides, including broadcast of this meeting, that are really outstanding resource for our community, whether that are school talk shows, the videos I've been able to produce during the pandemic. Mark Sarah, the executive director, his team, Liz Poplowski in particular, who worked with the schools, have been outstanding. And I know that Dr. Shu has really been very engaged and appropriately so in supporting that work now that they're their own organization. So with that, I enthusiastically recommend that the school committee reappoint Dr. Shu for another term.
Any questions or comments on this appointment? There being none. Okay, may I have a motion that the committee vote to reappoint Mr. Brian Shu as its appointed member to the Board of Directors of Shrewsbury Media Connection, Inc. for a new three-year term starting December 14th, 2020?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our minutes from our meeting on September 23rd, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections?
Are we going to discuss the letter during this meeting?
Sure, if you want to do that under, we can do that before the minutes. We can do that under new business.
Okay, new business, okay.
Yep, but we can do that now. Let's finish that, and then we'll add it under new business. Okay, so any changes or corrections to the minutes from September 23rd, 2020? There being none? Okay, those can be marked as accepted, as distributed. So under new business, we can also talk about, Dr. McGee has a suggestion for us, and if you want to present that.
I just want us to take advantage of the differences between schools and school districts as we gather information and learn about what is safe for educating our students in schools. Sooner or later, we're aiming to get our students back full-time in-person schools. And districts are functioning with different standards. Private schools may have different standards than we do, and all positive cases of COVID are tracked with the Department of Public Health. Now, they have their standards for tracking these, but they aren't necessarily oriented towards providing school systems with the information they need, particularly in a situation where all the risks of a condition have not been defined. So I think that certain things, for example, whether the child acquired the infection within the school or outside of it, which is something we're trying to establish here, that is an important piece of data for us to collect. In addition, whether there's three-foot spacing or six-foot spacing, because private, some private schools at least have three-foot spacing, and other factors that may influence the probability of a child being infected. When we make a move to get our students back in school full-time, it's not going to be six feet. And so it seems that we need some reassurance that three feet is safe. And it seems that in conducting their interviews, that adding a couple of data points that would allow us to stratify by school district or stratify by characteristics of the school would make sense. I've spoken with our representative, and she has touched base with DESC as well as DPH. Does not appear that that is happening. In addition, the responsibility for doing contact tracing is with the local departments of public health. She had suggested that we contact our local Department of Public Health and work with them to see if we can develop this. In addition, she would be very interested in seeing what interest there is at the state level. So I feel that if we can agree that there are certain components that are focused on the schools that will provide us with information, that we should ask our Department of Public Health to include that in their contact tracing and case reporting.
Any questions or comments for Dale on that suggestion?
I guess from a procedural standpoint, are you looking for the committee to take a vote? How would you envision?
I would say that if I send a letter, I'm sending the letter as an individual. If we construct a letter that has these elements to it and vote to accept it and send it in, then it comes from the school committee.
I mean, personally, I'm interested in it conceptually. Dr. McGee, would you prepare a draft letter for us to consider at a future meeting?
Yep, I can get that out to you in minutes.
Yeah, and I would ask Dale.
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, to draft the letter and then maybe have it for us for our next meeting on the 21st so that we can take a look at it. And I agree, I think it's, when we were talking about trends and data and analysis, having that additional information seems very helpful and a great, you know, the state rep has asked us, you know, to write that letter and push it forward.
It's, you know, we're working with a lot of theory here, and to be able to provide everyone with the comfort of saying, here are our results, I think is an important thing. It's an important metric.
I'd certainly thank you for taking the initiative. We're running behind in far too many places here, so I think it's, I think the more we can get and nudge is in the right direction with a hopeful eye that we'll get back into the buildings with what is the data we need. So thank you.
Anything further from Dr. Sawyer? Any comments or questions on that?
No, I concur. The better data we have, the better we can make decisions, and it would be in the interim before the next meeting when you may adopt this formal letter. As Ms. Freeman mentioned, we're meeting with some representatives from the Central Mass Public Health Group on Friday, and we'll be sure to mention that this issue to them as well at that time.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, Dale. So we'll look forward to that for our meeting on the 21st. Great. Okay, we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session? Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.